Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this Monday, July 24th, 2023, regular session of the Carmel Clay School Board. We'll call Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam President. Everyone is here and accounted for.
Thank you. Will you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, we have some exciting presentations tonight. We are going to get kicked off with our Presidential Scholar, Dr. Ferris. Or not.
Dr. Ferris is on the way.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. On behalf of Carmel High School staff, we are here to recognize Archit Colra. Archit, come on up, and I'm going to read a little bit about you and about the award that he has received. The United States Presidential Scholars Program was established in 1964 to recognize and honor some of our nation's most distinguished graduate... Stand right here. We're going to talk about it, okay? We're going to embarrass you a little bit. Each year, up to 161 students are named as Presidential Scholars and is one of the nation's highest honors for high school students. We recognized another student earlier this summer, Amoga, and Archit were among 5,000 candidates of the 3.7 million US students expected to graduate who qualified for consideration based upon their SAT and ACT exam scores. Archit, I think I'm correct, perfect scores on both. So candidates were then asked to complete an extensive application where their academic success, essays, school evaluations, and commitment to community service and leadership were reviewed. One young woman and one young man from each state are chosen, selected as Presidential Scholars, and it's crazy to think that both came from Carmel High School. And so... So we recognized Amoga earlier this year, or summer, as I already said, and tonight's Archit. And as I shared about Amoga, I also want to share a little bit about Archit. So Archit, this year, when this announcement was made, WTHR quickly called. They wanted to interview the students, and they came in. We did not prepare them. We did not tell them what to say, and they both said different things. And Archit, you remember what he said?
Yeah.
It was on TV?
Yeah.
Let me... I'm going to summarize and see if I'm right, and then you can correct me. One thing, Archit's moved around with his family, and with... They moved here, I believe you said, from Tennessee?
Yeah, all around.
So Tennessee as an incoming freshman, and one thing he talked about was he loved Carmel because of the size, the opportunity, the diversity, and all the things that were around that he was able to be a part of and take advantage of. And I think that's just a wonderful testament to... And then Amoga was just the opposite. Amoga talked about in a positive way about how she started in kindergarten and came all the way up through the system, and about how it was just a foundational process and how teachers played such an important role at each level. And I'm like, what two wonderful testimonies to what our school system is about. And we couldn't be happier. I've gotten to know Archit a little bit over the last year. He asks tough questions, interviewed me every month as part of our pinnacle yearbook, highlight newspaper, thank you. And that was something we always looked forward to doing, and it's just an outstanding, outstanding representative of our community. And you will be attending Yale, correct? Yale, and what are you going to study?
Neuroscience Academy.
So, amazing, amazing. So we are so proud of you on behalf of Carmel High School staff. Congratulations.
All right, now we have some champions. Mr. Inskeep?
Thank you, Mrs. Browning, Dr. Bearford, members of the board. Once again, a real honor and privilege for our student athletes and coaches to be here tonight, recognize some just outstanding seasons. And this past spring was a very memorable one for all of our teams, but these groups in particular here this evening reached the pinnacle of their sport. So we're going to be introducing four different groups this evening, and right now I'll have members of our girls' tennis team come forward that are here this evening, and their head coach, Dan Burnett. And as they're coming up, I want to say a few words about their team and their season. First of all, I want to thank all the parents, not only in our tennis program, but for all of these teams here this evening. It's the culmination of many, many years of hard work, lots of transportation... Transportation to lots of different events and tournaments and lessons and sitting in parking lots and terrible weather and all sorts of things, and figuring out all the communications from the coaches. And they do it willingly, and they are just such a great group to work with, not only our parents, but all of our student athletes as well. So we're very appreciative of all those groups. The girls' tennis team won the state championship on June 3rd. It was the third straight state championship for the program and the 13th overall title for the Greyhounds in tennis. The state championship match was played on one of the hottest days of the year, with the Hounds having to win two matches in one day for the title. Carmel defeated number one, South Bend St. Joseph, 3-2, to avenge an earlier loss in the regular season. Their only in-state loss during the regular season. Senior Elise Nelson came back after one set down and trailing 0-3 in the second set to win the team title. It was a pressure-filled match that truly was one of the most memorable moments from the 22-23 school year. The program is now 13-0 in state championship matches, and they are led by head coach Dan Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Inskeep, and thank you for having me tonight. We had a great season, and as a first-year tennis coach here at Carmel High School, it was particularly memorable for me, and it was quite a bit of pressure. Obviously, they had won the two previous years, and for the girls to adjust to a new coach and for me to adjust to a brand-new team, it was a remarkable season. And the fact that we, you know, had lost one regular-season match and were able to play that same team in the finals, and I think everybody on the team and everybody watching had a little bit of a nervous feeling in their stomach that we were not going to go home with the big trophy. But we prevailed. Elise Nelson is not here tonight, but she played an incredible match, and the entire team did as well to support her. So thank you, everybody.
We're going to have each of the girls come up real quick. They'll tell you their name and where they're headed to college here shortly. So this is... I like to throw things on you at the last minute, just to see if you remember where you're going and to let your parents know what your major may be, because it might have been different than 24 hours ago. So come on up.
Hi, my name's Ally Griffin. I'm going to the University of Tennessee, and my major is Health and Human Sciences.
I'm Nora Perkins, and I'm going to be a senior this year at Carmel.
I'm Olive Wajaya, and I'm going to be a sophomore at Carmel this year.
I'm Alex Wajaya, and I'm also going to be a sophomore this year.
Our next group this evening is the boys' lacrosse team. I'll have them come forward right now with their head coach. Say a few words about these gentlemen. The boys' lacrosse team won the state championship on June 3rd, just a minutes apart from the girls' tennis state team title. Carmel defeated Hamilton Southeastern 9-7 for the championship, and it is the first state championship for lacrosse since joining the high school athletic department in 2018. Very exciting season. Now-graduated senior Kyle Fedorsha was named the State Player of the Year for the second consecutive season, and the team is led by head coach Jack Meacham.
Perfect. First thing I want to do is just thank, Mr. Inskeep, for having me on staff here. It's been an incredible season, and highlighted with the, you know, excellent state championship win. It happens because of the players up here on the stage. These guys were phenomenal for us, excellent leaders, took care of business in the classroom and did everything we could ask them on the field. So thank you to them, and thank you to their parents for raising some great men and supporting us through and through throughout the course of the season. So what an awesome year, and thank you, guys.
I'm Kyle Fedorsha. I'm putting lacrosse at Bryant University. My major is exercise science.
I'm Quinn Huber. I'm going to Canisius College to play lacrosse and study finance.
My name is Mason Bardwell. I'm going to the University of Vermont to play lacrosse and study business.
My name is Leo Hammond, and I'll be studying finance at Indiana University.
I'm Matthew Soika. I'm going to Purdue University to study aeronautical engineering technology.
Our third group being recognized this evening is an individual, Cole Matisson. Cole is not here this evening. I believe his parents, maybe Amy is here. Amy, come on up. Amy Matisson, mother of Cole Matisson. And Cole Matisson has set a higher standard of achievement at Carmel High School in distance running. In fact, he's been here recognized before several times at this podium. He graduated as the most decorated runner in school history. At this year's state meet, he won the 3,200-meter run for a second consecutive year, and this championship added to his impressive resume that includes champ sports, cross-country national champion, individual, that's everyone in the nation, team state champions in cross-country and track and field during his career. He's the IHSA Mental Award, Mental Attitude Award recipient in cross-country, and individual state champion in cross-country his senior year, and Cole is headed to the Colorado University this fall. And our last group, we have members of our girls' track and field program, if they could come forward, our 4x400 relay. The girls' track and field team placed third at the state meet on June 3rd. It was the highest finish for the program in more than 20 years at the state finals. In scorching hot conditions, the 1,600-meter relay team of Gabriella Grande Rosas, Olivia Sebalo, Campbell Wamsley, and Emily Norris won the state championship in the final race of the meet. The Greyhounds clocked a time of 3:47.86 in a race that was never close from the start, I might add. And the exciting thing for us is that three of these four young ladies will be back in Greyhound uniforms next fall. So the girls' track and field team is led by Erin McGrill, and now each of you, if you'd like to come to the podium and introduce yourself, and Campbell, tell them where you're at.
My name's Campbell Wamsley. I'm continuing to run track at Indiana University, and I'm studying advertising and then marketing.
I'm Olivia Sebalo, and I'm going to be a junior.
I'm Gabriella Grande Rosas, and I'm going to be a sophomore.
I'm Emily Norris, and I'm going to be a junior.
Now we have Dr. Oestreich for some exciting of the years.
All right. Good evening, President Browning, Dr. Bearford, and members of the board. We're going to start out by introducing to the board and everyone here this evening. We are going to announce our Stephen A. Backer Teacher of the Year goes to one of our kindergarten teachers from Woodbrook Elementary School, Christine David Duke. Mrs. David Duke embodies everything it means to be a teacher. The love she has for her students and colleagues is evident in the way they trust and respect her. She has a unique ability to meet each student on their own level while still encouraging them to reach their next milestone. I could go on and on, but let's check out the video.
I'm glad I have Miss David Duke, because she's a really nice teacher, and she's kind to every kid in my class.
Mrs. David Duke is a great teacher because she makes a very difficult and complicated job look effortless.
Super excited that Christine David Duke is our Teacher of the Year. She is an awesome educator.
Christine stands out as a great teacher for many, many reasons, but the first thing that comes to mind is just her calm demeanor.
She's the true definition of the popular phrase, calm is contagious.
She understands that it's really her presence and her belief in her students that is going to help them learn and grow throughout the school year, and she is able to accomplish what she does really through a quiet and calm approach, and that's what really sets her apart.
My favorite thing about kindergarten is learning how to read and write. She teaches us trick words, and we practice tapping up CVC words.
Yeah, and we're doing like trick words and like fun stuff.
She knows their academic needs.
Being able to work with Christine in the classroom is anyone's dream. As the instructional coach, I oftentimes ask her if she is willing to open her classroom doors to model what something looks like or bring in some guests, and she is something magical to watch teach.
Her room served as kind of a little learning lab for other new teachers to come into and kind of see those best practices that are occurring in kindergarten.
When I work with kids from Christine's classroom, I know I'm going to have a bunch of kiddos who are great problem solvers, ones who have a growth mindset, who never are stuck in their learning but are always willing to challenge themselves to think outside the box and try different things.
So I did meet Christine in high school. We were actually both teachers in the Kids' Corner preschool program is how we met as seniors. We were in the same graduating class. As great as Christine is in the classroom, she's just as great outside of the classroom, a great mom, friend, wife, coworker.
Christine is truly the definition of a loyal and caring friend.
She's super fun. Her fun spirit is contagious. She's always the person that if I say I'm sick or my kids are sick, she'll text me and say, there's a package on your front step with donuts or popsicles.
When I have a bad day, she'll cheer me up.
She has a relationship with every single kid in her classroom, and they know it. They feel the love, they feel cared about, and they feel safe.
She brings these little kindergarteners into her classroom under her wing in August, and by the time they leave, she has them responsible, caring, first graders who are ready to not only succeed academically but socially as well.
That classroom, it's such a safe environment, so great for them to take risks and be excited about learning, because that's what she brings every day, that excitement, that love of learning each and every day.
Her students know that she believes in them. She has her whole heart in her classroom for every student, every day, every week of the whole school year.
So a couple of things to add. Christine did not know she was being recorded at the time for Teacher of the Year when you saw that great video by Mrs. Bauer. Additionally, Christine is a Carmel High School graduate, and we could not be more proud of her coming back to serve her community and now serving as our Teacher of the Year in Carmel. The last piece is that she now moves on to the Teacher of the Year competition for the state of Indiana, so she will be up against the best of the best in the state, and no matter what happens, she's definitely number one in our book. Congratulations, Christine David Duke.
Why don't you talk about her parade, Dr. O? Do you want to talk about her parade venture?
Oh, yes. And as Teacher of the Year, she was just recently in the Carmel 4th of July parade, and she received some of the loudest applause throughout the parade route, I will say. Congratulations again. And at this time, we are going to recognize Carmel Clay Schools Administrator of the Year for 22-23, and would Mr. David Woodward, Director of Student Services, please come forward? Mr. Woodward is not only very knowledgeable, but he is also easy to work with, communicative, and his understanding of the complicated situations that take place in schools. Mr. Woodward always has an open mind and a very thoughtful approach. David is willing to collaborate and problem-solve on a high level. He is an individual who not only listens but allows feedback to be shared in an open and honest space. David's support has been steadfast since he entered the district for building administrators, and our principals appreciate his guidance, collaborative spirit, and listening ears in dealing with difficult student and safety situations. He is calm, collaborative, and always professional in his approach. Not only is David CCS's Administrator of the Year, but he was recently named the Indiana School Resource Officer Association School Safety Leader of the Year. Congratulations, Mr. Woodward, and it is an honor to serve with you. Also, I wanted to share with our Teacher of the Year and our Administrators of the Year, they have all been nominated by people in the community, their colleagues, their students, and so everything I'm reading about our Teacher of the Year and our Administrators of the Year comes straight from all of their many recommendations they had for these awards. And so next up, I'd like to bring Mrs. Kim Piper, Principal of the Year, Prairie Trace Elementary School. Mrs. Piper is an exceptional leader. She knows when to listen and when to act. She is thoughtful in her feedback, and her collaborative approach with colleagues and teachers is appreciated at every level. Kim makes teaching and learning fun and has a positive can-do attitude. Additionally, Kim does a great job of focusing on the students and their needs. Kim takes a strengths-based approach to addressing challenges, which places students' well-being at the center of all decisions. Prairie Trace starts the first day of school out with Mrs. Piper's amazing organization and welcoming culture, and that continues on for the entire school year. Congratulations, Kim Piper, Principal of the Year. And now I do want, before we get to our last honoree this evening, I do want to let the board know that we're not just giving them a bunt cake for their awards. We have showered them with gifts and flowers and awards for their desk and office and all of those great things. So this is... Oh, and yard signs, yes, yes. If you drive by the Piper household, you will see that just down the street from here, the yard sign, and then Mr. Woodward. And then Mr. Woodward still proudly shows his over at his home. All right, finally, Assistant Principal of the Year Creekside Middle School. Put your hands together for Jessica Tubbs. As you can see, the entire Creekside administration is here today from all of their department chairs and their principal and assistant principals, athletic director. They're here to honor and support Jessica, and we love to see it, so thank you all for being here this evening. However, Jessica is an amazingly talented and knowledgeable Assistant Principal at Creekside Middle School. She can juggle so many things at once while keeping everything running smoothly. She has a wonderful rapport with her staff as demonstrated by the high level of communication she provides to her building as well as her colleagues at different schools throughout the district. She is always extremely kind and caring and is one of the main reasons why Creekside is consistently ranked among the top three middle schools in the state of Indiana each and every year. Congratulations, Assistant Principal of the Year Jessica Tubbs. And after they're taking this picture with the superintendent, we gotta get the whole team up here, right? From Creekside, come on up, Creekside, come on up as they're doing that. Let's get the team up here for a group picture. And as they're doing that, I'd also like to thank Kelly Davis for being here tonight, Principal at Woodbrook Elementary. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. We appreciate it.
Congratulations to everyone. We will now take a short pause so that if you would like to leave and enjoy some of your last nights of summer, you can, and then we'll resume in just about a minute or two. Congratulations again to everybody. All right, we will now move on, and we do not have any public comment tonight. The next thing on our agenda is appointments. Just for you guys to know, usually consent comes first, but it's gonna be after this, so I didn't forget. So appointments, we have the appointment of the Indiana School Board Association Delegate and Indiana School Board Association Legislative Liaison, Dr. Barris Ford.
Yeah, each year it's necessary for the board to appoint a board member to serve as Indiana School Board's Association Delegate and Legislative Liaison. At this meeting, the board will appoint a representative to serve from July 1st to July 30th term. We typically do appointments in January, and this is the only exception because we want the appointment to be in line with the General Assembly session. You know, it's a shorter long session, so that's why we're here in July. And the board recommends that Mrs. Katie Browning serve as the Carmel Clay Schools Indiana School Board Association Delegate, Indiana School Board Association Legislative Liaison from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment to the Indiana School Board Association and the Indiana School Board Liaison?
Good job.
Thanks.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Greg?
I, we talked a little bit about this. I had hoped that we'd have, do with the co-delegate and co-liaison this session, but I guess you've changed your mind on that. I think that's a good idea as terms every two years end. But I'd like to just let it be known that I'd like to be on that position next time we have one come around, even if it's at a co-delegate and co-liaison type position.
Can someone speak to, I've only seen that happen once? Like, when do we do that or why would we do that?
Yeah, the only time in recent history there's been two was when Jennifer and Leila Spanenberg worked on Legislative Liaisons. Because we go to July to July, Leila's school board term was ending in January, and so we wanted to make sure that there was consistency through that, so.
And so you're saying the person that was a co-delegate was co-delegate because they were taking over once she ended her?
Yes.
Oh, that makes sense, okay.
Yeah.
Because I didn't know why we'd give two resources to one position.
Yeah, it was just because she was ending.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to emphasize, I think that makes a lot of sense to someone's coming in for the first time to that position to be done as a co.
Thank you, Greg.
I was hoping for this opportunity to do that.
So your recommendation, I think, is different though, right? You're looking to be a part, you're looking for there to be two people permanently in the position. It's not that Katie's gonna vacate early and then you would take over, right?
I had just hoped that I could be on the legislative position, liaison position, and that it would make a lot of sense if I could do that with someone who's already been in that position before, that has more experience. That's kind of a training, on-the-job training, so I'd hope for that opportunity to do that. And I think it would also give us more diversity of perspective on there to have, you know, someone else, a new hire, so to speak, like mine.
Diversity of perspective? Say more. What do you mean by that?
Just my perspective.
Oh, your perspective, got it.
And then so one note too is for people who are watching and everything. So one of the things that we do as a board is we'll come up with legislative priorities together, and we'll draft a legislative letter that represents the board and the district, and those are the things that as a liaison and as a delegate is I would bring forth to the ISBA and any kind of things too. And Dr. B, do you have any kind of a history of the role?
Yeah, a big part of it is that we want to serve as a reference for our legislators because a lot of times, you know, they don't have background in education, and a lot of times the, I don't think either the legislators or we as school people want unintended consequences to legislation, which often happens sometimes. So we just want to be a resource for that, and we want to always, you know, for the last two years, our big push has been, hey, there's a teacher shortage, and we need to look at all legislations through the lens of how would it impact the teacher shortage? Because we just don't have as many people going into education programs, and so it's paramount. And you'll probably find out a little bit later today some of the impact of that here in Indiana, and surely across the nation. So that's the type of thing we would do, would be advocating for things that would be, you know, positive for educators across Indiana.
Thank you.
I would, since I have just vacating that, I want to reiterate some of those points that as the Legislative Liaison, I was not, I was representing the district and not my own personal opinions when I was in that role. And I was, and as we drafted those agendas, basically the role, in addition to making sure that our excellent team of administrators could speak as a reference point, we're also looking at the legislation and then just making reports on it. So in no time am I interjecting my own personal perspectives. I am making sure that I'm the liaison to report to our district. So good luck, Katie.
That's good information. I needed to hear that because as we make a recommendation of how we move forward, whether we do two or one, it's good to know that the person going or whoever we put in that position, the responsibility is to communicate the team's perspective, not individual perspective. So that's good information. Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion. We will now take a vote. All those in favor of appointing me as the Indiana School Board Association Delegate and our Legislative Liaison, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. All right, we'll now go into consent. On our consent background, this is something that Greg suggested, I think it was a good idea, is to have a little bit of background about what consent is. So if you'll see, if you ever look at the agenda, and it'll also be on our minutes, it's gonna a little be a background information. I won't read this every time, but I did want to make sure I read it today, and then on future agendas, it'll be there. Consent is the meeting agenda refers to a designated section where routine items are grouped together for efficient consideration and approval in a single motion, as opposed to individual motions for each item. Consent typically includes the items boards must legally address, but which should take, but should not take up considerable time, including payroll, accounts payable, personnel reports, minutes from previous meetings, and other administrative matters that do not require extensive discussion. By incorporating a consent agenda, the meeting can streamline the approval process, allowing for more time dedicated to critical topics and meaningful deliberation. So that's just a little bit of background information about consent. So with that, do I hear a motion to approve consent items for this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving consent, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. All right, moving right along. Oh, Dr. O, strike. I even had a note, sorry.
Thank you, President Browning. I am excited to announce and share that with the approval of the consent agenda, that Dr. Holly Herrera is our new Director of Human Resources for Carmel Clay Schools. Dr. Herrera has spent the past 10 years as a visionary leader as principal of Central Middle International School in Kokomo. Prior to serving as a middle school principal, Dr. Herrera was a middle school assistant principal and also taught special education. She is collaborative, results-driven, and has experience recruiting, selecting, and hiring certified and classified staff. Dr. Herrera prides herself on maximizing system efficiencies, and we look forward to her contribution to our outstanding school district. Dr. Herrera earned her bachelor's degree from Indiana University in Kokomo in teaching, her master's degree in education administration from Ball State University, and she completed her doctoral degree in education administration from Indiana State University. Dr. Herrera is a strong leader and has been recognized for her proven ability of establishing community and international partnerships that have led to innovative opportunities. We are lucky to have her serving our staff, students, and families in her new role as our Director of Human Resources. Dr. Herrera is joined this evening by her husband and her three children, and you can often find her entire family here just north up at Grant Park as all three are highly accomplished soccer players. Congratulations, Dr. Herrera, and welcome to your family to Carmel Clay Schools.
We are so happy you are here. Thank you so much and congratulations. All right, we will now move on to the action items tonight, starting with the adoption of Policy 2500, the Teacher Appreciation Grant. Dr. Dudley.
Yes, thank you. So this evening, I bring to you for a recommendation for approval for the updated Teacher Appreciation Grants. This is a policy that I brought to you at our last meeting, and each year it is required that the board adopts the policy for the Teacher Appreciation Grants, that this is money that we receive from the state, and our teachers that are highly effective and effective receive this grant.
Any questions for Dr. Dudley? Okay. I know. Do we have a motion to approve the policy of 2500 Teacher Appreciation Grant?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thanks, Colleen, for keeping me straight. Five? No. No, you're good. All right, we'll now move on to change orders. The Carmel High School Naterium addition and existing naterium renovations, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This change order, as you noted, is at Carmel High School. It's an add change order of $134,017, most of which is to extend the guard rail that's currently there along the sidewalk to take that down to Smokey Road. That was, that's an example of, was pointed out from a safety standpoint, and that it would, it would be better to have that extended. So it's not directly a part of the naterium project, but we were signing it to that, you know, the funding for that. And so that's, that's the major change order. There was also another one about $30,000 of this, that was $103,000. And $31,000 of it then was to change the material from galvanized to aluminum, which is in the pool area. We were concerned about it, you know, the chemicals affecting that.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the change orders?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions?
Kristen? I should have probably asked this in the email, but just where does it end now? Where does the guard row end?
It ends, I don't know the feet, but it ends a number of yards from Smokey Road. So there's a section there that anybody walking on that sidewalk is not protected with a guard rail. So that's, that's the reason, to extend it down, on down to Smokey Road.
All those in favor of the change orders for the Carmel High School Naterium addition, existing renovations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. We now move on to 6.3 change orders for the Carmel High School Greyhound Activity Center. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is another add change order in the amount of $220,566. This is for necessary revisions to the foundation for that structure. I believe it was an unforeseen conditions that had to do with the soil and that the, basically the size of the, what was specified is not large enough to support the building. So that's the need for this change order.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the change order for the Carmel High School Greyhound Activity Center?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, all those in favor of approving the change orders, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We will now move on to the discussion portion of our evening with the proposed facility projects for 2024. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. See if I can handle this technology. All right, well, we have, as the board is aware, we have a number of what I'm referring to as the 2024 facility projects. I'd begin by noting that these projects are recommended for '24. They'll be financed through lease rental bonds, and that these bonds do not, will not result in an increased tax rate. And I want to elaborate more on that later, but in terms of how it impacts or doesn't impact our taxpayers. We're gonna present Jim Enskeep and I believe Tim Ferris from the high school are gonna provide some insight relative to the rationale for the stadium project. And then Peter English will make comments with regard to the Cherry Tree project, and Bill Payne, Fanning, and Howie will provide some insight from an architectural standpoint on both of those projects. So, let me go down to the next one. So, and I'll give an overview here, and then at the end I will address the, you know, the financial part of it. So the first project is a major renovation of Cherry Tree. Cherry Tree was opened in 1989. We've, and these are preliminary numbers, and I'd like to say that we're generally pretty close, but the recent situation in the marketplace is such that we found, you know, had need to change some projects. And so we're certainly hopeful that these are- And so we're certainly hopeful that, that these are, are, are close, but the very nature of the process is, is we can't get to final design before we ever get approval to, you know, to do, or at least, you know, potential approval to, to consider the project. So they're, they're, they're based on the best information we have, having started in, in the schematic design stage. The second project is at Carmel High School. It's a stadium project. That stadium opened in 1991. It's, it needs a major renovation, but I want to elaborate a bit because there's really two or three things that I'd want to emphasize. One is, is that all of our educational facilities, and this is an educational facility, it's not just a football stadium, but buildings physically become obsolete, mechanical systems wear out and so forth, and that's, most people understand that and they see that. But the second part is, is our facilities become programmatically obsolete, and that's why they're there in the first place. So if they're not, you know, we're not trying to restore an old car or something and keep it original. We want the facility to support the educational program, and as you'll hear in a minute, our related to that facility, the program has changed considerably in the last 30-some years. And then the third piece on this project is, it also requires some expansion, again, because a lot's changed, size of the high school and size of the programs and how it's used and so forth. So Tim and Jim, I'll elaborate on that more, but that's that project. We have some, what I'm referring to as miscellaneous projects, replacing of a cooling tower and, and upgrading the lighting in the gym, some concrete repairs and so forth, at $2.5 million. Then at Creekside, we're doing some outside work. This is, if you'll remember, we had this in the '23 projects and moved it to '24, which didn't change the schedule, it changes, because we weren't gonna do this project until the summer of '24 anyhow, but it, but it does change where the, where the financing comes from. And so, and then Carmel Middle School has, again, referred to as miscellaneous projects. That building's close to a mid-cycle renovation, but we have, we have, so we have $2.5 million there. There's some things, probably the single most significant maybe is a remodel of the Intense Emotional Development Area. That's an example where it's not supporting the educational program. That program, when the building was built and even had a major renovation, that program wasn't there. And so, so we really feel a need not to wait on that. And then there's some physical aspects, the auditorium roof repairs and so forth, that we really need to do there. And then finally, that we have $6 million for technology, and that covers about three years, not, not one year, but, but, and we've been including our technology, some of it, not all of it certainly, but, but most, if not all, the equipment and what you'd identify as like student devices, first of all, that's, that's of course a big piece. But then there are other things like projectors and the various technology that you see around. And so that's the total, and, and the outline of the projects. And at this time, I'd ask Dr. Ferris or Jim to present some rationale for the stadium project, and then we'll go to Peter after that.
I'm not sure what we would do without Colleen, so it's good.
Nobody does.
No. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Dr. Ferris and I, in conjunction with Mr. McMichael and Dr. Beresford, this has been a project that has been talked about for many years, starting back in 2019. So when we see the stadium, I think, you know, you drive by and it looks like this concrete structure that is kind of impenetrable, if you will, but, you know, like everything, things need remodeling, things need to be replaced, and certainly, this facility has been showing its age for many years, and we're in the year, we'll be starting year 33, school year of the stadium, going back to 1991, as Mr. McMichael said. During that time period, the last 33 years, a lot has evolved. You know, I would say when the stadium was first built, you know, the primary function was athletics and football. It's, it's evolved so much since then, as things have continued to get larger at Carmel Clay Schools, Carmel High School, and our community outreach, and just every, the year-round nature of everything that we do, from the compartmentalized seasonal type stuff that happened before. Starting back in 2005, we put the first-generation artificial turf in. That increased a lot of usage of the facility. Now we have just installed the third section of the artificial turf here this summer. What we see is that everything is a continual use now year-round at the stadium. So we want to talk a little bit about the highlights of, of what has changed during this time period, to kind of give you a broader sense of what, what is different now since 1991. So I don't want to be one of those folks that goes back-to-back in the 80s type of thing, but we do need to go back a little bit from there. So as you can see, a lot of things go on there, other than Friday night football. Lots of things. And for us, on a daily basis, there's a lot of collaboration, teamwork, accountability, all those lifelong skills for all of our kids that utilize the facility, from performing arts, to our unified sports, to our physical education classes. Our middle schools have contests and track meets there as well. Seldom-known stuff, like it is a, is a voting polling place. One of the great things about that stadium is it's not inside the school. And so as we've gone away from polling sites inside of our school buildings with students, this remains one of those vital places for our community. One of the things that's behind the scenes, because we do all the scheduling for the facility out of the activities office in the high school, is there's extensive Carmel fire and police training that takes advantage of our facilities as well. So again, it's more than just a Friday night place to gather for our community, but I'll talk a little bit more about that as well. So in 1991, freshmen were still at the, at the junior highs, if you will, not middle schools, but junior highs, so we only had three grades at the time. Video preparation for football was, was, while it was used, it was called film, because it was film, on VHS, beta if you were lucky. So, but a lot of things have changed during that time period. So the football program has grown steadily. 100 about that time, boys' track and field, as you can see, about 75, girls' track and field, about 55, and these are based on the historical numbers that we have in our office, and, and that World Wide Web had not been established yet, and Twitter still had the same logo as of today. So 32 years later, a lot of changes. I mean, a lot of changes in our school, and it's been such a great ride for us at Carmel High School, because it's been such slow, steady progression, being able to stick, stay up with all these changes in our district. As our population's gone up, it's been a steady increase, so we've always been able to stay ahead of it. This is one of those facilities, though, that's kind of laid untouched during that time period. So we always talk about 20 years kind of being that big, major renovation. Well, this never got the, the mid-year cycle like Mr. McMichael likes to pride himself on, which is awesome for our buildings, but this is one of those facilities that, again, it's just continued to fall behind in lots of different areas. So now you see the changes, double the size of almost all of those programs. Now we have coed unified track and field as well, and so that has also been something that has been utilized heavily by the stadium complex as well in the spring. Some other changes I see here, video preparation, and as we talk about square footage that'll be shown on later with classrooms, these are things that become just a daily necessary thing within the building. Right now, we are squeezed everywhere for those educational opportunities for our student athletes and classrooms out there, so this would allow us for a little more space as well of that large group instructional. Some of the rules have also changed since 1991 with the IHSAAs, so there were specific time periods in which student athletes could be coached by their high school coach. We still have those, but there are many, many more opportunities for that through the limited contact times. And again, that, that use of the artificial turf has also been one of those things that has increased our use of the facility year-round as well. 1991 was when it was built. ADA laws changed in '92. We were just under that, that umbrella. Nothing that we should be proud of, honestly. Our ADA accommodations at the stadium are severely lacking and need to be addressed, and would be as a part of this project. We make it work right now, but only because we're really, really, really nice and have some wonderful workers that make people feel very comfortable, but I can tell you that it's not something that it lives up to the standards of our other ADA-compliant facilities throughout the district. Traffic flow in the stadiums become a major issue for us. Back in 1991, when the stadium was built, everybody thought it was kind of a massive facility. Well, I can tell you that, that three of the five largest crowds we've had have occurred in the last two years. Standing-room-only type crowds, students, we have a lot more students now than we had. There were 1,800 students at Carmel High School in 1991, '92. Now we're gonna be over 5,300 this year, and so a large number of those kids come to events as well. That doesn't take into account all of the, the middle school kids and community members that come to that as well. As we've continued to evolve, our emergency planning for these large events has also continued to evolve, and as we were talking about with the, our relationship with the school resource officers in the city, these home events are a huge part of our community. And the Carmel Police Department does tell us that those five Friday nights that we have at, at the high school in the regular season are the five largest non-Carmel Fest community gatherings in the city each year. So the lot, the number of resources that that takes, and the planning that goes out to that as a, as a facility that would need to support that as well. The press box has really evolved as well. Being a former WHGE and CHTV staffer, I can tell you that their, their preparation and their use of the facility and the press box has changed immensely since my time period. They're many, many years ago. I won't say how many, but I can tell you that the student media and their needs has changed quite a bit, and we went from tape-delay VHS tapes to now live web streaming with all sorts of things, and you've seen what our Hounds HQ team does, et cetera. It's, it's amazing stuff, and these types of changes would support their efforts, many of them going on to study these things on past Carmel High School. Already talked a little bit about this with just the steady increase in our home football games and the number of events that are out there. Stuff I also did not mention is that student government utilizes the facility for many events throughout the course of the year, and our family restroom areas are non-existent there right now. And I think we would all say with young families, those are things that have become commonplace lots of places and very much appreciated by our younger families in the district that like to come out to these events there. Okay, and then the last page here, just talking a little bit about the increase in student attendance at our events, then when we talked about student athlete increase, just in the last 20 years, we've, we've more than doubled in size with student athletes at Carmel High School. So from 2000 here to 2023, going from 800 to about 1,800, that's a pretty large increase, obviously, in one area that's using this facility quite a bit. Not all of those student athletes, but many of them utilizing them any number of times. But those coaching staffs have also changed, so the staff area needed for them has also been something that we've talked about, and this is a really good thing, but laundry habits have changed. I can tell you that that locker room smells much better than it used to, because there's now daily laundering that goes on, as lots of things have come up between skin diseases, MRSA, et cetera. Hygiene's become a very, very important part of the program, and part of this would help to expand those laundry facilities to meet the changing needs of that, and I think helping out our student athletes and just the overall hygiene of that entire area. Dr. Ferris?
No, I just wanted to take a minute to emphasize a couple of things, Mr. McMichael had us mentioned, and then Mr. Enskeep as well. It's just the fact that this is really more than just a football stadium, and we've talked about that in, in many times, but we sometimes drive by it on a Friday night and see the lights and think about that, but the, the classroom that is used, I mean, we really look at it as, as an opportunity for our kids to be able to do things during that football game. We have radio, we have TV, we have sideline reporters, we have different types of things, and not just that, but there's also the different events throughout the spring that our kids are able to work through and to be able to work at. And so for us, we look at it as an opportunity of not just to bring the facility up to date, but also to give our students an, an opportunity to learn and grow in their prospective areas of interest, and we think that it would be a great opportunity for us to continue the excellence that we have within the district to be able to do that. How about questions?
Yeah, great.
I just have a comment.
Go ahead.
Just anecdotally, my son, who is, was a Carmel football player, 6'5", big kid, he had to finally quit because it smelled so bad in the locker room. He couldn't stand it. So I'm glad to know that the, and I'm gonna pass that on to him.
Louise?
So in your presentation, I did not see that we are working on the tunnel or bridge from the stadium to the school. I feel like there's a lot of people in the community that want that Roger, so when are we gonna work that into the budget?
We don't have plans for that. We certainly, that's, that's been brought up a number of times, and, and when we start talking about the practicality of that, and, and first off, unless it's all fenced off, you know, it won't be used, because people take whatever the direct path is. We have the same conversation, for example, going from the front of Carmel High School to the library. And so, it gets right down to it, it's, it's certainly wouldn't be insignificant financially, but, but, you know, we try to find a way if we think that's the right thing to do, but in this case, we don't, for a whole number of reasons. But the first is, is just, you know, getting that many people really every day, twice a day, or more, kind of going up or down and handicap access, it just goes on and on and on, and the, you see, like on the mona, if you're on a bicycle, it's one thing if you're riding, you know, across the street, and you start, you know, way back here, and it gradually goes, so you can imagine, this isn't just some little thing goes like this. It's really, you know, extensive, and, and, but we really haven't come up with something that we think could, would actually, we could ensure that people would actually use it to the extent we want.
Couple of years ago, it came up, and they had some ideas they brought to the board. I mean, we talked about tunneling under, and there was a water table issue, and then we talked about going over, and what he says is, if there's a ramp to go over and then walk over, but then there's a street, you have teenagers, they're just gonna walk right across the street. They're not gonna pay any attention to the ramp going over, so you'd have to fence off the street for a way long time, so that kids aren't trying to go over it, because it's faster than walking upstairs. So there's lots of things, and we really just kind of, one of the things we worked a lot with the city and city engineers, to make sure we have those lighted crosswalks and all those things, and Kristin, you're kind of talking about that right now, too.
I just drove that way on the way here, and the, the lights are really nice now, I think, just to alert drivers to slow down. They, they're pretty bright, and I think they do a good job. There was just a single person crossing, and it was, I, I thought it was a lot more adequate than what was there previously. Yeah.
And finally, I would say that because we all recognize, you know, that it's a road and so many people, pedestrians crossing, we're constantly focused on that. So, and we staff accordingly, and as you said, recent improvements have addressed kind of the physical aspects of it. So because it's so significant, that also results in, in a very well-thought-out plan and very well-staffed situation, so that, so that it is safe, and, and having human beings out there, you know, stopping the traffic before they cross, you know, we concluded that's safer than, than relying on a, on a, a bridge or a ramp, that unless you come up with a way to totally guarantee you can't get, get a, because it, human beings are, they're gonna take whatever's the easiest path. And so when you start to imagine, what would that take? You have, you have to have fence to Keystone and probably to Range Line, somewhere where there's farther to walk around than it is to go up. And so at any rate, that's.
It would take too long to explain, but if you want to come by my office, I have the study that the city did.
Yeah.
And, and I can tell you the whole spiel and the length, and it's, it's, it's a monster, but the city was really well, when they did that study, then one of the things we did agree with this was we totally changed that, that crosswalk and made it ADA-safe, and put in all those lights you were talking about. And so when it's heavy, you know, when it's, when, when the heavy, when we're leasing kids from school to the parking lot, there's staff all over the place, but, but if you're just like, kind of. But, but if you're just like coming out of practice and coming down the hill, that crosswalk is, is really well illuminated, like you said, and, and, and it's great partnership with the city to make sure kids are safe. So, I'm sorry, I keep, I'm going to keep rolling, I know.
I have a question. So, what, do you find, Dr. Ferris, more opportunities to use the stadium more like during, like for school assemblies, anything like that? Like, do some of these renovations kind of open up more doors for the future of utilizing stadium that you haven't even listed?
It definitely does. From an aspect of, you know, this year, we did something brand new. At the end of the year, we did our PTO, use the stadium for our graduation morning, we call it sunrise celebration with our seniors. And, and those are things, our, our homecoming activities. There are no, no doubt that there's not many places we can fit as an entire school. This is one of them. And so, for us to be able to do that, we do believe it opens the door for other opportunities to be able to head to the stadium for different types of activities if we need to include the entire school.
Yeah, oh, that's what I was thinking. Great.
Would this ever be an opportu, well, what's the capacity right now?
The capacity right now is about 6,200 seats.
Would this ever be a way that we could have the graduation there, or is that not possible because it's not covered?
If you can promise us that it will not rain and storm on that night, then absolutely. I'm not, we could, we could definitely consider that when you think of it from the idea of sheer size.
Okay.
But.
But weather, you're right.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of plans that would go into that, that would create maybe some other obstacles.
Kristin? Just because it is near and dear to my heart, and I'm not sure everybody understands what Unified Track is, I just wanted you to explain.
Absolutely. So, Unified Sports are where our students partner with, students with IEPs, our special needs students partner with, our general education students. And there are multiple, you'd be better off speaking about the sports specifically, but they, they perform different sports.
Yes, it's a, it's a program that's continued to build, and it's overseen by the IHSAA actually, in conjunction with Special Olympics of Indiana. So, our Unified Sports include flag football in the fall, also includes Unified Track and Field in the spring. And then, we have other opportunities for them to compete, including Unified Bachi, of which we host the state finals at Murray Stadium. So, just a lot of those opportunities, there's a bowling that goes on in the winter. So, for us, it's, it's been one of those opportunities for kids that as we've gotten bigger, it's allowed for not only to create these great opportunities and experiences for our, our special services population, but also opportunities for our, our student body to also be engaged with that as well. And so, seeing a lot of those kids taking that experience and knowing what they want to do with the career path just because of having those types of, of moments, so.
Thank you. Ms. McMichael?
Okay. Well, we'll ask Peter to make some comments relative to Cherry Tree and then Bill Payne will.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? My, I was making a note when you were down your follow-up.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
You had mentioned there's a, there's going to be some enhancements for traffic flow. Could you elaborate on that?
Sure. No, not, not car traffic, but just pedestrian traffic within the stadium. So, when the stadium was built in 1991, one of the main problems at the old stadium was students, adults that would congregate in front of the stands. So, in a lot of facilities you might go to, you, you walk in front of a sidewalk, and then you walk upstairs from the track to get into those stands. Well, you might notice that our facility is a backloading facility, and that was on purpose because it then eliminated kids standing in front of it. One of the unintended consequences was it really limited where you could get in the stadium. So, when you enter the facility now, you enter from the west, coming up the ramping system, and then you're kind of stuck there in those seating areas. We've tried to retrofit some stairwells coming out of there, but those are not, have not worked. It does not help the traffic flow as much as it should, and the design in of itself is, is limiting. This design that you'll see a part of this evening from, from Bill Payne will show the concourse level is greatly enlarged on the back half of the stadium on the home side, and also steps coming down off of those new ramps that would be, be proposed in there. That would be a huge increase for us to be able to get in and around the facility. For us, kind of when the middle schoolers get down in that event level, they're kind of stuck down there, and it takes a lot for them to get up into the stands. So, if you kind of watch from the other side, it's kind of like an ant colony going up and down the steps the entire game. Having these steps from behind and redoing the ramping system would greatly enhance that, that ability to flow through the stadium itself.
And one last thing, you'd mentioned it holds 6,200 people. Now, the seats is, will the seating be increased in this, or will it remain the same?
Yeah, there, there are some, we've had discussion about including permanent, like bleacher seating there on the south end. That is not part of this proposal. But right now, you know, we put temporary bleachers down there, like the three-high type things. But, but certainly, as we've gotten bigger, you might have noticed as well, we've, we've taken out about half the bleachers in the home side of, where the students stand to help with them as well, because students standing on aluminum bleachers, as you can imagine, Monday was the nightmare for our maintenance staff to go and work on those every day. So, that's why they stand in the concrete and not on the aluminum bleachers for those first several rows. So, it's a seldom-known fun fact, so.
Thank you.
But those students, that, that whole section's just, I mean, it's just ballooned up to the point where it's, it's a good 40% of that home side stadium, so. It's a good problem to have.
Thank you.
All right. My turn. Well, good evening, Dr. Beersford, administrative team, and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes of time, excuse me, to share how the proposed renovations at Cherry Tree would have a lasting and positive impact on our day-to-day operations as well as better meeting the needs of our students. As was mentioned, and as you may know, Cherry Tree Elementary opened to students in 1989. Since that time, there have been several additions in terms of staff to support students, with all of these additions needing spaces to offer those services. We're currently working with some of these staff members and spaces that were never intended to be student support spaces, including the use of what was originally designed as storage rooms in a couple of cases. The additional staff that have come on board since the building originally opened include assistant principals and assistant principal, two therapists through Ascension St. Vincent, a full-time SRO, and an additional part-time administrative assistant in the office. We also have wonderful instructional assistants who work directly with students throughout the day, offering a variety of services, including support for special education, MLL language learning needs, and general support for students in the classrooms. These instructional assistants do not currently have an easily accessible space to house their personal items and do much of the work that they offer to our students. The proposed renovation addresses all of these needs, redesigning the center or the core portion of the building, as well as adding additional office space to the east of our current entrance to properly establish offices and workspace. The existing design for the building includes the use of pod areas for our students in grades one through five. Each pod consists of four classrooms in a horseshoe shape with a small common area to be used for small group and individual supports. The pod areas also house a small storage room that's often used for small group support. In the proposed renovation, the small, the storage space, the small storage space, would be dedicated to student support with a window that overlooks the pod area itself. This is an important addition because it not only makes the space more visually appealing, but offers staff and students a more comfortable learning environment that would be easily accessible from the classrooms. And in addition, several of our grade levels are serving five sections or classrooms. And in the proposed renovation, classrooms would be added to the center and the core space in the building. This would help bring more of a community feel to those grade levels and easier access for students who change classrooms throughout the day. It's not terribly common in the elementary, but during our math block, for example, we do have students who travel from class to class. The proposed design also brings a fifth kindergarten classroom and a third early childhood classroom to Cherry Tree, giving all of our sections in grades K through five equal space. The district's seen an influx of students accessing early childhood in recent years, and the addition of a third classroom would take some of the pressure off the existing classrooms in our building and other CCS schools in regard to enrollment. In wrapping up on positive changes to the pod spaces throughout the building, this renovation would replace temporary walls in those four classrooms in the horseshoe spaces that were there when the building opened. The original design allowed for those collapsible walls to be open for more of an open concept, as was the practice at that time. But in today's environment, having permanent walls in those spaces better honors the needs of individual classrooms from a noise and from a safety perspective. Cherry Tree, if you have not been in, come see us. Cherry Tree has one of the most beautiful library and media centers that I have ever seen in an elementary school. It's gorgeous. One of the less functional portions of this space is a loft that was placed at one end. This is currently not used by students and honestly just serves as a storage space for some of our instructional assistants to leave their personal items throughout the day. The new design takes that space out and reimagines a new maker space that would be dedicated to imaginative play and design. Our media specialist has created a space currently in the corner of the media center for this type of work, but with the removal of the loft, this would completely open up possibilities. As you likely know, all elementary schools have a special area class dedicated to STEAM concepts as well. The new design provides a right-sized space for this classroom and has windows that overlook into the media center as well. The integration of these two spaces makes sense from a logistics standpoint and also gives great, an opportunity for visual representation of the learning taking place, not only in the STEAM classroom, but the great work that's being accomplished and done in our media center on a day-to-day basis. So, when thinking about having a space in general in the building for more than one class or for staff to gather, the large group instruction or LGI space is a really important feature in any building. The current LGI that we have is undersized and is not as functional in design as the proposed space following renovation. We would look forward to having a more open and usable space to host guest speakers, teach grade-level concepts or topics, and host meetings in the building. Finally, in terms of functionality of the office space and from a safety perspective, our current school entrance is locked and requires staff to buzz student, guests into the building, as we know is practiced in all of our buildings. The current design at Cherry Tree brings guests into a large entry space that has access to the two main hallways in the building. The district's done an outstanding job of retrofitting that space with secure doors, but the new design for the entrance to the building has guests entering directly into the office, which is secured at all doors. Our guests could then be greeted immediately by staff, and it also places our SRO office at the entrance with line of sight toward the front of the building to see approaching guests, as well as line, line of sight directly into the office in order to offer, offer assistance quickly if needed. And so, with that, and on behalf of the staff at Cherry Tree, I want to thank you, Board, for your consideration in improving this bond to address these positive changes to the structure of Cherry Tree Elementary. Will no doubt have a positive impact on not only our, our learners, but will better support our staff who offer those important services to our 700 kiddos each and every day.
Thank you. Questions? I'll just, Greg?
Has there been a, like a mid-cycle renovation to Cherry Tree before?
Yes. I don't know the year offhand, but it would have been probably close to 15 years ago.
Okay. So, so this is kind of like another mid-cycle?
No, this is, the significant difference is, is our mid-cycle is, starts with primarily cosmetic upgrades, basically replacing most or all the finishes, with a possible exception of like tile floor or something. And then, we do some minor renovations if needed, but this is a, absolutely a major renovation. This is a project that, under a difference, you know, with, with Clay Center and Carmel Elementary, as you know, we, we, they were due for a major renovation or replacement, and we chose replacement. We felt it was necessarily this building, built in 89, we're certainly not recommending a replacement. But, so it is, but it's very definitely a, a major renovation, which again is addressing the physical facility, but also the programmatic needs. And I really ought to reverse those because we focus first on the program and, and, and of course, then on the facility itself.
So, so you feel after this, you mentioned that safety change in the entry. It sounds pretty important. You feel this will be right where it needs to be?
Yes.
You mentioned the early childhood capabilities and that it's grown substantially.
Yes.
How does one determine which physical space their child feeds into? Is that by location where they live, where they work?
I may have.
You mean which location or whatever?
Yeah.
I can address that. Yeah. So, I forget, probably, in the early 2000s, we were, you know, that program was coming into play, and so, it, it kind of got placed wherever we had space. And so, we recognized a need, one, to have purpose-built space, as we do with other programs. And then, secondly, the model that we have, we, we provided space in basically the four quadrants of, of the district, so east side, west side, and then north and south. And so, that's, and then, then students then are, are, they attend, you know, generally whatever general area that they're in, that's, that would be our first choice. Sometimes it's not that perfect based on staff's, you know, student load and so forth. And that's what's happening here. The program has grown, and so, we're in need of, of some, since then, so now we need, you know, a few more classrooms.
Greg?
Yeah, just to get some perspective that, so with Carmel Elementary, the original building was demolished and new and built because it was not up to the standards that we need. What did that cost compared to what we're doing here with a $30 million investment?
I'll answer that question, but first, I want to, I want to start by sharing what it costs today, because the inflation has just been out of sight. And our, our partners in this estimate that if we were building either one of those schools today, it, it would be somewhere in the 40 million-plus range, probably, you know, even mid-40s. But those buildings cost us, off the top of my head, about 30 million. Clay Center has a, has a couple of the early childhood classrooms, so it's a little different. And so, it was a little bit more. And that price was, when that project started, was, you know, we, for years, we'd estimated, for quite a few years, we'd estimate a new elementary school at about 20, under 25 million. So, so construction and the price of things is just, you know, going crazy. And we had a little bit of that conversation in our previous meeting, and, and so, it's like, what do you do? We don't think waiting's a good idea. It's like playing the stock market. If you, do you really think the price is going to come down? And if it were a single thing, like petroleum-based asphalt or something, maybe, that would be different. But when we talk about the whole project, it, it just, that's what it costs, to answer your question.
So, to replace it, would it, could you take a stab at some kind of a number?
I, I would say somewhere 45 million or between 40 and 45 million.
Do you think that would be a significantly better solution than a major renovation?
I, I don't think it'd be fiscally responsible. And so, this time, I would add that as we looked at this facility, those two schools were the fir, the first new elementary school design that Carmel had since the early 1990s. Prairie Trace was one of four schools that we built off that same floor plan. That was the last new school, but the design came from another school, and so, it would, had been built a few years before that. So, so, so with the two new schools, we had the opportunity to kind of start from scratch and truly, you know, design from the ground up. And I, I would want the Board and the public to know, when we looked at Cherry Tree, first of all, whatever we do at Cherry Tree, you know, Smokey Rose three years, two or three years behind and after that. And, but also importantly, we looked at all of our schools. And so, we, we didn't look, we certainly looked at the new schools, and we, and more importantly, I think, we looked at the educational program and, and so, you know, if they have courtyards, why they have courtyards. If they have pods, why they have pods, and as it relates to the program. And so, we, we took this existing design with that in mind, but also what we could do in the future. We can't reasonably tear down every school we have so they can look like the two newest ones. And so, so we've, we've, we are doing our best here, and will continue to do so, to, as we renovate and do. We can't reasonably tear down every school we have so they can look like the two newest ones. And so, so we've, we are doing our best here, and will continue to do so, to, as we renovate and do major projects, to bring them up to the current educational standard, but within, you know, somewhat within the footprint, if you will. It may involve additions. This has some addition to it, but we aren't looking at it from like starting all over again. And if we thought we should, that's what I'd be recommending to you.
Just one last one. How old was Carmel Elementary?
Well, Carmel Elementary, you know, it depends. The original Carmel Elementary, which did not look like the building that you're familiar with, I think, again, off the top of my head, I think it may have been built in, it was the second elementary school in Carmel, so it's been a while. And thus Carmel Elementary, and to begin with. And so I think the original building was built probably in the 60s, and then it had a, it had a major renovation in late 80s or early 90s. And so generally what happens is, is somewhere around that 30, 40, 30, 35-year range, a building will be in need of a major renovation for the reasons I've previously described. And, and so in the case of Carmel Elementary, this would have been the second major renovation. And, and so in assessing that, we concluded that it would cost, you know, about 75% of the cost of a new building to do that, and you would not get, you know, an adequate building in terms of what we really felt we needed for the educational program. For example, the ceilings are very low in that building, so short of taking the roof off and raising it. And keep in mind, in a renovation, the first money you spend, if you're doing that type of renovation, is for demolition. So you don't get anything back for that. You have to clear it out first, just like if you're renovating your house. And, and, but again, unlike some other facilities, we're not doing this to preserve it and make it like new again, like it was when it was built. If we were doing that, we'd still have the one-room schoolhouse, but, so, so that's the difference between this project and that one at least.
Thank you.
I just have one comment. My daughter had the privilege of attending Cherry Tree one year, and I remember that loft, and I think it is the prime example of child of the 80s, because it is the staircase that goes up, and then there's like this loft area with these open railings around it, because, you know, elementary kids don't climb, and there's no way that they would be like looking over the edge. And so it looks really cool, and I think as a kid, but yeah, definitely one of those things that is like, a mother didn't design this.
Prior to my time returning back as Principal of Cherry Tree, I may or may not have gotten a call about one of my children up there doing some things that they shouldn't have been doing.
Very cool, but not very smart. So, anyway, that's funny. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I ask Mr. Payne to come and share with you some preliminary designs, and so you can visually see some of the reflections of what you heard in the narrative.
Do we get pictures? Pictures!
Ideas.
Yep, I will. Been here, done that. Members of the Board, Dr. Beresford, Bill Payne, Project Executive Fanning, Howie Associates, just a little factoid since we're sharing them. This happens to be the first major project of Fanning &amp; Howie Design for Carmel Clay Schools, completed in 1989. It was also the first year I joined Fanning &amp; Howie, so we're sort of the same age range there.
So the loft is your fault?
I was getting to that. I'll get to that. Okay, so you've heard quite a bit. Mr. English provided a lot of background in terms of the programmatic requirements that will result, will be responded to in our design. I would like to say, with the exception of the loft and a few other things, there are pretty good bones here. In fact, in 89, grouping in neighborhoods, classroom pods with operable walls was in fact quite, quite the idea of moving forward. And in fact, in the new schools, we spent a lot of time working with Central Administration, looking at both Clay Center as well as Carmel Elementary. Of course, they have neighborhoods as well with an expanded collaborative workspace. The big difference is, is that now Carmel is moving primarily towards a five-classroom neighborhood as opposed to a four-classroom neighborhood, which Cherry Tree was designed in. So that was one of the big things that's informing the proposed design. The other area is what I'm going to refer to, which is the core, which is the area between the two main east-west hallways, which include the media center, some additional classrooms, sort of a former computer lab that's being used as the STEAM room, the administrative offices, you've heard, which has had some corrective action taken for security that can be improved. So those are areas that we are going to address in a significant fashion, as well as mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and technology systems. Pardon me. In addition, in working with our partner, Construction Management Partner, Skellman Corporation, we know that the most economical way to do a project such as this is to try to limit the location of the number of additions that we do to the building. And so again, in working with the administration team, as well as our partners, we've discovered a way that we're proposing that will have a singular addition with one minor exception. I'll explain that in a moment. So that most of the new construction will be focused in one area. It'll be approximately 6,000 square feet, which will make Cherry Tree Elementary School equivalent in size to your two new elementary schools, and satisfy all of those needs of instructional assistants and other administrators and specialists that are now being housed in closets, storage spaces, and so forth, in a much more effective way. So what you're seeing here is the existing plan for Cherry Tree Hazel Dell is over here to your right-hand side, softball complexes to your left, staff parking, access to the gym during Dad's Club in the weekend is from the north, and then from the bottom side is where buses queue up and come in and drop off students. There's a very nice entrance sequence with tree-lined courtyard there, and that's one of the areas that we think that we can address much more effectively. And so what you're going to see in the proposed plan is that's where our new single entrance is going to happen. So we've added some color here just to help describe some of the main changes that we are making to the building. I'll start out by talking about the classroom neighborhoods. So remember, Carmel is basing their neighborhoods on five classrooms. Now, in the other sister schools that Mr. McMichael referenced, Prairie Trace, College of Women, and so forth, they're arranged in such a way that those fifth classrooms are actually sort of in a swing position, right next to and part of those neighborhoods. Here at Cherry Tree, some of those are a little bit more extended away. And so what we've done is, we're going to reposition some of these so that, as you can see in the color areas, the two violet areas, the orange, blue, and green, these are our five main classroom neighborhoods that each have five classrooms now. And in the case of the green and the blue, two, their fifth classrooms are directly across the hallway and adjacent to them. And that's really important, because teachers collaborate within those neighborhoods at that grade level, and so that's a really important relationship. We're also changing within those neighborhoods, we're eliminating the operable walls, putting in permanent walls since they're not really used, but that's going to provide us a more functional, albeit smaller collaborative workspace and small group instruction that will be serving each one of those five classroom neighborhoods. Over here to the right then, the darker reddish-orange area, that is the existing four kindergarten classrooms and two pre-K or early childhood classrooms. We're going to add an additional kindergarten and an additional pre-K classroom in the core area just to the north of the green, I guess I can use my pointer now, right here. And they do have some windows observing a new activity courtyard that's going to be located here in this yellow area. We've added one kindergarten and one early childhood. It could be that you may end up at this school because of enrollment. Sometimes you'll have four early childhood and four kindergarten, but it's easier to house an early childhood and a kindergarten, which tends to be a larger room than vice versa. So this gives this school, the Cherry Tree Elementary School, much more flexibility. Remember, I mentioned about the single addition, and that is this yellow area here, and that will house the new administrative offices. There'll be a new entrance directly facing Hazel Dell, just as it does now, but it'll be much further forward, towards the parking lot, and configured in such a way so that, as Mr. English indicated, you'll come directly into the office area as opposed to a secondary vestibule with the SRO office immediately adjacent. This is configured the same way that both your remodeled schools, as well as your two new elementary schools, are designed. There's an internal hallway system, which serves as access for administrators, instructional assistants, workroom, and so forth. Some of those folks will be housed here, and again, in working with Mr. English, we've determined which of those folks, those administrators, those other folks are best housed here versus in the core, more out in the area, more adjacent to the neighborhoods, so that teachers can access them and vice versa more easily. The core area, which again is this light blue area, as well as the classrooms I previously mentioned, with the exception of that beautiful ceiling that Mr. English referenced, the media center, which will maintain the wood ceiling, most of that area will literally gut and start over from scratch. Moving from the west, there are two classrooms here, we'll be removing the separating wall, and that will become the new large group instruction, and that's equivalent to what you have in your two new elementary schools. And it's in a great position off the core, immediately adjacent to the Discovery Center, as well as to all the neighborhoods off the hallways. The Discovery Center, formerly the Media Center, will be right-sized for collection. It will also have a new maker space located within it, as well as necessary office, storage and support areas. Oh, these two areas right here are rather important. Let's see, there are 65 women in your building, is that correct? Okay. There's one staff restroom. We have two staff restrooms down here at the other end of the building, so that is a big need that was identified, so I'm sure staff will greatly appreciate more opportunities. Adjacent to the Discovery Center is a new STEAM room here with access off of both hallways. One of the things that we're going to do is make sure that we have lots of windows into these spaces, because these are certainly exciting spaces for students with all the technology, robotics, and so forth, and so we want them to be able to actively engage visually in those spaces. Here in the center of the core, then, we also have instructional assistants and other support personnel, and again, we've located them more towards the core and closer to the neighborhoods, so that they're more directly in relationship to the teachers and students that they are serving. Part of a full life cycle renovation will also be the full renovation of the group restrooms. We are also introducing several gender-neutral restrooms within the core area. The art and music classrooms are appropriately sized, they'll be fully renovated, but they will remain in their present location. And then gym, cafeteria, stage, kitchen, mechanical areas, slightly lighter renovation. We've done some work in the past with those, replaced bleachers, replaced the wood floor in the gym. Those are still very serviceable, so we'll be very selectively replacing components. Finally then, here adjacent to administration, this is formerly a community room and staff lounge. We relocated the staff lounge more appropriately to the corridor. This is our functional academic program here, which has an adjacency to the administrative offices, as well as a controlled entrance, and will be a self-contained program for those students. So that's a quick, high-level overview of the proposed design. We are currently working regularly with Central and staff, or excuse me, and Mr. English to continue to refine the design, which we expect to complete towards the end of this year. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? All right. Thank you so very much.
All right. We'll move on to the other one. This does not happen very often. I really appreciate you. Usually everybody's glad to see me depart the podium. High school stadium, so we're going to focus primarily, what I'm going to show you is focusing on the home side, but I'm also going to indicate to you some of the work that's going to happen within the stadium itself. We're going to look predominantly at floor plans, both existing and proposed. This is the lower level, underneath the concourse. Some of you have probably never seen this area. It does exist. It's down there, believe me. It's down there, and from time to time, it has had some odor issues, which we've solved with some mechanical issues, but we'll definitely be solving that with a full replacement of all mechanical systems. When this building was designed and first occupied, oops, sorry, I didn't mean to go there yet, there are two large spaces, which are the locker rooms here, JV and then varsity. And then we have a number of support spaces, which are truly undersized, as Mr. Enskee and Mr. Ferris, Dr. Ferris, were talking about earlier. And we just don't have enough of those types of spaces to accommodate the year-round use of this educational facility, which it truly is. There's really only one direction we can go, and that's westerly. So this building is oriented in this case where, to the top of the page is west, or your home side, your, excuse me, your home parking area, tailgating area to the west. And to the south then, of course, is the stadium proper itself. So this line right here, this dashed line, is the current exterior wall of that lower level. So you can see everything to the top of that is all new construction. This will make a lot of sense when you see the concourse level as well, because as Mr. Enskee indicated, there's really just not enough space to accommodate the spectator load, and in fact, there are 3,500 seats on the home side. So the locker rooms stay in their same position, but the thing that I think is really going to be important with this new design is the fact that in this new addition, we have introduced a new corridor, which provides access to multiple classroom spaces, training areas, and conferencing capabilities. Again, I just hit the wrong button again, sorry. Don't mean to confuse you all. So what this does is, the locker room areas can be secured, and yet male, female students, athletes can access the training area, which is this dark blue here area, without accessing or breaching security into the locker room areas. And likewise, these classroom meeting rooms, which will serve both the football team, as well as other sports and activities. Locker rooms are appropriately sized, it's support spaces, as I mentioned, that really need to be addressed. And so we're adding an additional office space, again, a toilet space. One of the things this corridor will also serve is during events, this will also provide access to a new elevator, which will serve lower-level concourse and the press box. This is pretty much standard in any design now. And we've talked for a number of years about how to incorporate an elevator into the configuration. At this level of renovation and addition, that really makes that possible now. Oh, sorry. Okay, good. So the circulation system is all the gray area, and so that semi-circular gray area about midpoint is that corridor that I was talking about, which will provide access to training facilities for both male and female student athletes, also to the classroom spaces, which are the green areas. The yellow areas on either end flanking are the new mechanical spaces. As I mentioned, we're going to be replacing all the mechanical systems, much better ventilation, address any kinds of issues that you would typically have in locker room areas. On the bottom side of that corridor then, the two green spaces are additional conference slash classroom spaces. We have a small kitchenette for food service. That elevator, which is just about in the middle, and you'll see where that corresponds on the concourse level, as well as the press box, will serve all of those levels to provide disabled access. We did an ADA study a number of years back. We are addressing all those accessibility issues in the context of a major renovation, which makes perfect sense. Then to the south of this dashed line area, which is again, the existing west wall of the lower level, we are fully renovating the restrooms and showers for both of the locker rooms, and we're doing that in such a fashion, which we do now. Of course, they're currently group restrooms. That's really not a safe situation for students. These will become individual shower compartments. That's pretty much the standard now, is the approach that we take. Coaches are in the orange area here to the bottom of the sheet, both head coaches, as well as other coaches that serve for the football team and other teams, and they have visual access, they're directly related to the locker rooms. So again, there's visual observation of those locker rooms, which anything that we've done in the Carmel schools, we've also made sure that we've always had that supervision from coaches and teachers. The light blue areas on either side are those existing locker rooms, which will be renovated. To the right, the green area, is the hospitality room. It serves as another classroom, it can continue to It serves as another classroom, it can continue to serve during activities as a hospitality room as well. And then to the far end, we'll totally renovate equipment storage and laundry area. As Mr. Enskee noted, laundry needs have increased dramatically, and so we'll be dealing with that. Okay, this is the concourse level, and I realize this plan is not very intelligible, so I'll see if I can explain very quickly. For most of you probably know, flanking either side, if you go up the ramping system, and these are the ramps to the top of the sheet, when you get up to the top to the concourse level, you have two large restrooms, female on the south end and then male to the north end. Those are accessible restrooms. But the problem is, is that flanking those are the aisleways that lead directly into seating, and then right in the middle is the singular concession stand. So for any of you that have attended a football game, you know how congested that whole area is. Just because we've asked all of our thirty-five hundred spectators and students to come up to that level and to use those services to get into the seating area. So with the benefit of expanding that lower level, we've increased the concourse level by probably approximately forty percent. And again, the new concourse is the gray area. The lighter white area to the top are new ramping systems, which are in fact going to be a little bit more gradual. We're going to soften the rise on those, so they're easier to transit to get up to the concourse level. We have placed two new concession, concession stands at the north and south end. So we've moved those folks and all the queuing to those ends away from the access into the stadium seating area and away from the bathrooms. The existing concession area, we're going to repurpose for a spirit shop, for other potential support activities, possibly some storage. And again, there is also an elevator lobby, so for folks that can't transit the ramp, who need to use an elevator, that has access to this level as well. And finally, the press box level, and there are two levels of the press box, first and second level. And I immediately noticed that we have these mislabeled. So actually on the right is the press box first level. It is accessed presently from seating only, so to get to the press box, you must come out into the seating area and then walk vertically up the aisles to get to the press box. It's not accessible, there's no elevator, there's no ramping, so if you can't negotiate that, you really can't get into the press box. And then likewise, once in the press box, the only way to get to the second level is via the stairs, which you can see, that's sort of the upper right-hand corner in each one of these cases. There are a lot of specialized activities that go on in this press box, either during a game or for teaching activities such as Mr. Enskee was referencing. And so those are really not served well by the size of this press box. We did a number of tours of peer institutions and have generated a proposed design, which we think much more closely satisfies all of those needs. One of the most important things you'll see is the elevator accesses both levels, and in this case, we do have these labeled correctly, this is first level on the left-hand side and second level. You'll still be able to get to the press box via those vertical aisles, but those won't be necessarily the way in which you need to access the press box. Again, you can use the elevator to get up there. That elevator will serve both floor levels as well. Once in the press box, there is an internal stair which serves both levels. The large gray area illustrates a two-tier seating, predominantly for media and other folks that are attending the game, and gives them clear sightline views with lots of glass to the stadium. When the original press box was constructed, for whatever reason, there were rather large columns that were introduced in the east wall of the press box, and they impede views for much of those folks sitting in the seats. In a redesigned version, we will not have those large columns, we'll do a different design where we don't need those in those locations. Flanking, the two orange areas are scoreboard and PA announcer, and then media to the other side. On the second level, you can see we have a number of orange spaces that are subdivided. First and foremost, we have coaches' areas located, and they're apart from each other, so obviously visiting and home team. We have camera positions in the middle, focused right on the fifty-yard line, and then CH TV to one end, and then the radio station to the other end. The gray area on the interior of that is for circulation, for tables, for setting up, for food services that might occur during those activities. Oh, sorry, almost missed it, very important. So you can imagine, if you're somebody in a press box, unless it's during intermission or halftime, how are you going to use a restroom? So we do have two gender-neutral restrooms located on the first level that are both accessible, so that that serves those folks. So again, that's a high-level overview of the proposed design at this point. We're working very carefully, again, with Carmel High School staff as well as Central Administration, to continue to develop this design. Again, we expect to be done with this towards the end of this year.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, let me add a couple.
Yeah.
I did mention, so I'm sorry. There are some other attendant improvements that go along with this project. So because we are extending westerly, or this direction, you may know that there are three major sports lighting poles on each side of the stadium. That's unusual. In a day's world, we typically have four, they're LED, they're high-efficiency, much more economical to operate. This will allow us to extend to the west, we'll eliminate that third pole. We'll come back with two new LED light standards on either side of the stadium to upgrade and provide a more economical approach to that. Down at the ground level, we'll be dealing with some new entrance gating and features to get folks in and out more comfortably than they presently are. On the seating deck itself, there is a wear system on the concrete surface. This is our primary roof over all of this area. We restored that, I'm going to say, between ten and twelve years ago. It's starting to show wear. We're going to replace all of that system to provide a weather-type system over top. Also replace necessary rusted handrails, damaged seating, whatever. And then we'll also do the same thing on the visitor's side, so that they'll be equivalent in appearance when you're standing on the fifty-yard line looking in your direction.
Thank you.
Are we, are we doing any improvements to the accessibility on the visitor's side? You mentioned making those ramps a little less steep.
So the, so the new south support, right, the new south support building has accessible restrooms and a brand-new concession stand, so that was a better response. We don't have as much space on the visitor's side underneath that we do on the home side. So it was felt that a better response that would serve all folks from both sides would be to place those accessible features at the south support building.
So it sounds like, as far as like the bleacher part, is that going to stay very similar? Like where people are sitting?
Yes.
Okay. And then are the lights going to be like the ones that are at Clay Center, the baseball fields with the light pollution? Like, almost like, they have like little visors almost on them?
Yeah, so they have cutoff.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, City of Carmel has very stringent standards in terms of light cutoff at property lines. We're far enough away, we'll not even come close to that, we'll be able to meet those criteria.
Fantastic. It looks very cool. Any other board questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. McMichael, on that topic?
Now the fun part, the money. Okay. Well, I want to start here. Let me make a couple comments about, you know, the team that puts all this together, because it's not any one person, believe me. And so we look to have, you know, educational perspective, financial perspective. So there is somebody like me that is very sensitive to the cost and the taxpayer and that whole piece. As well as, of course, you know, whether, if it's the elementary school, you have the principal and certain staff, same way at the high school. We also have our Director of Facilities, Todd Fenolio, who's also a licensed architect. We have the architectural team, we have the construction management team. And by the way, the construction, one of the significant responsibility for the construction manager is to assess the architect's design. And, you know, they, they don't try to design the building, but they will offer comments that we'd call value engineering, for example. And that would, the constructability of the design and the, and the cost of different choices. And so there's a whole team of people with different perspectives. And out of that, we, we, our intent is, is that we'll come up with the best solution. That's, that's not just the cheapest, it's not the most expensive, it's not, it's not totally driven, you know, just by the educational program, because we do have to balance all these things. It's not, you can't tear, tear every school down and start over again, and we shouldn't. And so, but we do want the building and the design to, to, to support the educational program. So you'll see, you solve many of the elements that are also in the newest schools that we have, but in a different way. And so with that, I want to talk about the financing. And, and this is one page of multiple pages that is put together by Baker and Tilly, our financial partner or advisor. And, and I want to show this, because, and you've heard a lot about tax rate, and we don't raise the tax rate. You've also heard about, you know, you don't raise a tax rate, but that doesn't mean the taxes don't go up. And the money doesn't go up, because it does. And so I want to show you this, and you'll see, a couple of things I'd point out that we're honestly proud of, and, and we're fortunate that we're able to provide a project like this and pay it off in ten years. This is like your mortgage, and most of us aren't able to pay our house off in ten years. This, and the ten years is, and we have some bonds, as you can see, I don't know if it's showing any here, but we've sold bonds and pay them off in five years. And this one's ten, that's, that's half or less than half of a typical schedule for a bond issue. And of course, that, that's meaningful because you're paying interest. And so we don't want to pay interest any longer than we have to. We start with a philosophy, if we, we could pay cash, we would. But we balance that with how long it might take us to save up enough money and, and have a facility that's deficient from the educational program while we're trying to do that. Same way, you know, on a personal level. Most of us, you know, aren't in a position to pay cash for our house either. So, so I'm, you know, I want to point out the payoff schedule, because in most of our worlds, sixty-eight million dollars is, is a lot of money. And, and it's hard to get your kind of arms around that. But, but first, the payoff schedule, secondly, the tax rate. But I should have mentioned this years ago probably, but I want to emphasize that, one, and I think the board members are aware, I don't know if the community is, but in Indiana, there are tax caps in the state constitution that guarantees a homeowner is not going to pay more than one percent taxes. We're not talking about rate now, we're talking about the actual money they're going to pay. Is not going to be more than one percent of their net assessed valuation of their house. That's, I believe, is, that and, and how we approach this is more significant than a level tax rate. Or at least as significant. And that is that, you've heard us talk, we've talked about referendums, we'll talk about it a little bit. I'm going to offer some more information on referendums later, but in the financial report. But as you know, we have a, we have two referendums. There's a third one out there that we could have, and that's called, I'd call it a facility referendum, referred to as a capital referendum, but most people understand that facility is better than capital. And, and all of our neighbors have facility referendums. And that, I want to emphasize, that's not a criticism of our neighbors, their circumstances are different than ours and, you know. So, but we have made a decision not to put this project, these projects, for example, on the ballot. We've had three referendums, we're about to, you know, had them approved, because the exception to that tax cap is, is basically the referendum says, I agree to let you raise my taxes. And so it's just opposite what some people think. We've had, we've had people, if they, they don't think we should do this, they want to put it on the ballot. Our three referendums, we don't take this for granted, but they were passed at a seventy percent rate. So if it's on the ballot, I guarantee it'll raise your taxes, because, because it's not subject to the cap. So all of the projects that you've ever heard about, and, and that we've ever done, and we have never put them on, on the ballot to, to be able to exceed the cap. And so, so as a taxpayer on all of this, that's an additional kind of protection that you have, that Carmel Schools is not going to ask you to raise your taxes beyond that cap to do any facility project. And we don't have plans to change that in the future. And we're not going to raise, we're also not going to raise the tax rate. So you really have to look at that from both perspectives, not, not just the, you know, we've advertised about a level tax rate, but I'd want to emphasize that second half of the equation. And that is that we also do anything we're doing with facilities that are within and under the tax cap. So that, that's really important. And so, and it's important, I think, that we're able to pay off our debt in less than half the typical time it takes. And then finally, regarding back to the tax rate, you'll see here that not too far out, you'll see, first, we do maintain the rate, but you also see that it not only is, doesn't go up, it goes down, based on our best projections at the time. And, and I think these are conservative, by the way, because somewhere out there in the late twenty twenties, some of the TIF districts, and again, you are more familiar with that than maybe some, some citizens, but as the TIF districts are not protected from taxes forever, they will, they will eventually, those areas will come back onto the tax rules. Now you're talking about upwards to twenty percent of the assessed value in Carmel. So as, as TIF districts increase even further our assessed value, again, the equation is, to raise the same money, that will lower the tax rate. And that's what, one reason why you're seeing this is, but I don't, you know, we're going to be very conservative in this, because we wouldn't tell you it's going to come down here and it, you know, we'd rather come in lower than that than higher than that. So these are conservative numbers that we're presenting. I don't know what happened to my picture here, but. So, so those are the comments that I would make relative to the finances. This process to outline it, we're not asking for action this evening. It's the first meeting in, in August. We will ask, we'll, we'll be talking about the financial part of this, and so we'll be talking about that and, and having, presenting information on, kind of on the finance. But importantly, we will ask the board to approve a notice for a public hearing, which will be the first of two public hearings. So before we get to the end of this, there will be two public hearings. And of course, part of the, part of the reason for the public hearing is, one, for the public to have an opportunity to share with you what their thoughts are. But also, as importantly, it's also for you to hear what their thoughts are. And so we're not asking to make decisions tonight, that's, that's part of the process. As elected officials, you know, you, we want, and the state wants you to have the public's perspective in, in that public hearing forum. And so there will be two hearings. The first then, so first we'll advertise, but then, so the hearing will be in, in the second meeting in August. And then we'll have a second hearing, the first meeting in September. And, and, and if you haven't said no by that point, we're going to continue to assume that, that you're not saying no yet. And, and you should understand that we are, the way the process works, we have to continue to proceed with things. And so, so we're, we're accumulating certain expense for fees, for design and those kind of things. And so, but I want to emphasize, we're not asking you to vote on this tonight. And, and now eventually you will vote, will be asked to vote on the financing in particular. And if you're going to vote yes on the financing, it presumes you're, you're okay with what, what we're proposing to do. With that concludes our report, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. Any questions from Mr. McMichael at this time? All right, I am sure we will have lots more to come, as we always do, so stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to Dr. O'Stryke with her Staff and Student Services report.
Good evening again, President Browning, Dr. Bears Ford and members of the board. We have been very busy in human resources. We have been very busy in human resources this time of year. And so wanted to have a short update for you today with some of the work that you're doing and some of the work that we'll continue to do in the district. And so Indiana code requires me to report on our teacher evaluation results every single year. And so there they are. Now, the highly effective is up about 9%. The effective is down about 9%. And the needs improvement is about the same as it was from last year. Also, we just had our CCS support staff job fair. It was highly successful. We had many members of the community come out looking for different jobs that we have throughout the district. We had approximately 70 community members come out looking for different positions, and they were, they were able to apply right on the spot. So they went, they could talk to every single school, all the assistant principals were there. And then also, our food service was there, transportation, substitute teaching, all of those areas. And then after they talked to someone, they could go straight to the computers and apply right there and then. We wanted to get them, get them there, get them, have them apply. We also had 10 offers on the spot, of course, pending background checks and reference checks and all of that. So it was a highly successful evening. The most successful areas where people came to look for jobs were EduCare. Ton of people came for EduCare positions. The recent, I believe it was IndyStar article really brought people in. They saw that article. They wanted to be a part of EduCare, taking care of our littles in the district. So that was exciting. Lot of people wanted to work in food service in our cafeterias. We had a lot of IA candidates that night. And then we also had a lot of substitute teachers. Today, we had a substitute teacher training, we had a little over 10 people there. And so we continue to have those substitute teaching trainings probably about twice a week, three times a week leading up to the school year. So a special thank you to our administrators, our staff members, and especially our H R team who came together before Dr. Herrera was approved. I'm very happy she'll be with us now, moving forward. And so it was a very successful night. But you notice one, one position's not on there. Bus drivers, how about bus drivers? How are we doing? And so with bus drivers, we are actually a net positive from the last school year. So we've been working hard this summer. It's been going well. We're not a huge net positive, but being a net positive nowadays with bus drivers is a very positive thing. And so with our bus drivers, just to share with you, we're still in need of bus drivers. We will still hire bus drivers. Also, we're in need of bus aides. We're looking for staff members that can be on the bus with students who might need a little extra assistance while they're on the bus. So if you're interested in a great flexible schedule with being a bus aide or being a bus driver, we will still hire as many bus drivers as possible. I will share that from this, from last year to this year, we've eliminated two double routes. So once we started the double routes, we've eliminated over half of them now with our hiring efforts recently. So we're very proud of that. However, we cannot eliminate the walk zone at this time. It would take an additional 25 to 30 bus drivers to fully eliminate that walk zone. And so while we continue to have success hiring and we are at a net positive, it is still very challenging to hire bus drivers. And one thing I did want to share with the board is that hiring a bus driver is much different than hiring an instructional assistant, an instructional, or a food service person or a substitute. They can come in, they can interview, we can offer them, they fulfill all the requirements that we have, state and federal, and then we can have them start within days. With a bus driver, though, if you don't have your CDL, now, we have hired a couple that have their CDL and we can get them in right away, but if you don't have your CDL, there are numerous steps you have to take in order to become a bus driver, and I outlined them on the slide. So you have to apply and interview, just like any other classified position. But then you have to study the state bus driver manual. I read through that this summer. It's quite a few sections, it's quite a few pages, and you'll have to memorize, or not memorize, but yeah, full, almost memorize a lot of that because then, in order to obtain your CDL Class B, which is what you need to drive a bus for that learner's permit, you have to take a test at the BMV. And so that's an extra step that people don't have. Then, after you get past that step and pass the test, you have to go in for a medical exam and drug screening that's required by the state. So there's an additional step. Then after that, you have to take behind-the-wheel training. And we, by the way, we offer all this paid training, for those of you out interested in driving a bus, all paid training. We offer paid training to get behind the wheel. That lasts approximately two to four weeks, just depending on how available you are during that time. And so then, after you are trained, you would then take a behind-the-wheel exam like we all did back when we were 15, 16, actually 16 years old, getting the learner's permit now. And then, once you're officially licensed to drive, you can roll on in and drive for us. So there's a numerous amount of steps in order to become a bus driver. And we have really honed our process over the years so that we are not losing anyone in the, while they are going through each of those steps. So I just wanted to outline that. While it may seem, hey, why don't you just hire 30 more bus drivers? First of all, they're not always out there. But secondly, we're working on it and there's a lot of steps in order to get your CDL. Mr. Clevinger is also looking for a bus mechanic, and we are hiring at this time. And so if you know of anyone that's a mechanic, especially someone that may be working at our dealerships right now, we would love to talk to you. The bus mechanic here at Carmel, it is a much more stable position than you would get at a dealership, for example. A lot of the dealerships, they're paid on commission. So if there's no work, they may not get paid. Also, if there's a ton of work, they're required to work all kinds of overtime, and we don't have that here in our transportation department. So the rates are up there depending on experience. So if you are interested, call transportation, call myself, check the website. But we are looking for a bus mechanic. We're very proud of the mechanics we have. They do a tremendous job keeping our buses running safely and in a tip-top shape. And so we're looking for another person to join our team, and I let Mr. Clevinger know that I'd be happy to share that. And then finally, how are we doing with our teachers this summer? And so overall, we've had a very successful summer hiring teachers. We are very fortunate in Carmel that we have a ton of interest, probably some of the most interest in teaching positions in Carmel Clay Schools in the state of Indiana. However, you've heard us talk a lot about the teacher shortage, so I wanted to put some numbers to that. And so that's what I've outlined here. I've taken random positions and I looked at the number of applications we had in April when we started posting positions and the number of applications we've had in July for certain positions. So in April, look at an elementary teacher, 155 applications. In April, that's about what we get, plus or minus, you know, some of the positions may be over 200 for elementary positions. But because there is such a teacher shortage in the state of Indiana, by the time we get to July, look at that, 12 applicants for a recent position. Now, we're going to get someone great, don't worry. But I just wanted to show you some numbers. Math teachers, which is an area in the state of Indiana that's in a needs, that's in a huge need. We had 22 applicants, that's pretty amazing, for a math, a middle school math teacher. We had a recent one in July 9, which is still pretty good in the state of Indiana, but you can see how that dwindles down. High school English teacher, 29 applicants in April, which is great, five in July. We're going to get someone great, don't worry. But special education teachers, that is the area probably in the state that has the most need. We had eight applicants in April. We have two for a position we posted in July. I'm going to say again, we're going to get someone great. Very confident in that. But as you can see, the pool of candidates is drastically shrinking from April to July because people are getting jobs, because there's so many jobs out there. Look at the I D O E where they post their positions. And so back in April, they had 1,828 teacher openings. In July, they have 1,721. There are going to be many school districts in the state that are going to start the year and they will not be fully staffed. We will be fully staffed here in Carmel. I am confident in that. We're not done, we still have two weeks till school starts. So there's always surprises in a district where you have over 1,000 teachers. But I wanted to share that information with you because that puts some data to it. And then also, what I wanted to share is that when you're looking at our speech language pathologist, when you're looking at our school psychologist, when you're looking at our science teachers, those are high-needs areas as well, as well as our special education teachers. I had a superintendent call me last, late last week and said, Dr. Oestreich, can you send me any elementary teachers you have left over? We have no elementary applicants. And then you're looking at S L Ps, school psychs, it's tough, especially when some of those positions can go in business on their own and make money on their own in those positions. That's, if we're losing S L Ps, we're losing them because they go into business for themselves. Or a school psychs can go make more money in certain areas. And so we have a shortage, absolutely, as you can see with the number of positions. But we are in better shape than almost any other district in the state of Indiana. Our principals work exceedingly hard to recruit and attract great candidates. I just had a teacher from another district send me a message today that wanted to come to Carmel, but we don't have that opening at this time. So we still get a lot of interest in the state, but I wanted to share some of those numbers. However, we've talked about teacher pipelines before, and this is the part I'm most excited about, I'm most proud of, that those 15 names that you see up on the screen, they are Carmel High School graduates. And they have chosen to come back to Carmel to serve our community and to go ahead and teach in our district. Some of those names you see up there took the education professions or the teaching class for college credit at Carmel High School. One of the teachers on there, I'm sure Emily's going to get a story on this individual, but she's coming back to Carmel Middle School. She's going to be on the same team as, and teaching the same, or teaching the same subject as the teacher who inspired her to go into teaching. And so those are the types of stories, these are the pipelines we need to continue to cultivate. I'll continue to be over at Carmel High School, talking with our education professions class, but I'm very proud that we're bringing, and this is, this is, this is over 15% of our new hires that are Carmel High School graduates. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we are working exceedingly hard this summer and each and every day. And hiring is a 365-day job nowadays, especially when you're looking at our classified staff and continuing to hire the best and the brightest here to Carmel. Thank you.
Thank you. And first off, thank you too so much to your staff and everything, as we know, this is a super busy time, and so thank you for presenting to us tonight. Questions from the board?
I'm excited about our new H R director. I'll be interested to hear some of her thoughts on, you know, strategy and approach to recruit the best talent, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Greg?
You said we're close to being fully staffed with teachers. How many positions do we still have unfilled?
I would say we're five or less at this point. So we're doing, we're doing really, really well. And in those five or less, we've been interviewing. I just talked to Dr. Ferris before the meeting today, so he'll be recommending a couple new teachers. And so we're very, very close. Yeah, thanks for asking.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Oestreich. Monthly financial, Mr. McMichael?
Okay, I think Colleen's going to pull the first information up, but well, prior to giving the typical month-end financial report, I want to talk a little bit about our referendum. As you know, we had some conversation about it at the previous meeting and there was, there was some information that I need to update and really correct. You know, Greg?